Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We'll get going on our meeting. This is the 10th Lehigh Heidelberg Cement Quarry and Plant Town Hall meeting. And for some of you, this is actually my first time hosting this meeting. And so for some of you, it may be the first time for you to see me. It's a really honor and pleasure to be here. I am your new supervisor for Santa Clara County District 5, Margaret Abicoga. And as I was elected this past November in 2024. And as you may know, District 5 stretches from Palo Alto in the north all the way south to half of Almeden Valley in San Jose. I actually have nine out of the 15 cities in Santa Clara County in District 5. And I said, I have the most cities out of all of the districts in my district. And it's just a real pleasure and an honor to be able to represent amazing communities, including Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Mountain View, where I'm from originally, Cupertino, Saratoga, Los Gatos, and Monteserino, as well as Almeden. My little bit of a background on myself. Originally, I was born at Stanford and I grew up in San Mateo up north. My parents were immigrants from Japan. And I think my dad was very instrumental in teaching me about paying it forward. I got interested in public service through as a student and then met my future boss, Congresswoman, former Congresswoman Anna Eschew. And I served as her district aide for six years. And that's really where I got the bug to to serve the community. So it's been an honor. I served as a council member in Mountain View for 16 years, four terms, twice as mayor. And I have, I guess, bad luck in timing in the sense that I was mayor during the Great Recession in 2009 and then COVID in 2020. And so I've had my share of crises. But what I love to is that our community has come together in times of crises to overcome those moments. So I'm very, very proud of our community. Of my priorities, protecting our environment is actually one of my top priorities. I've served on a number, actually, a number of these bodies, this Water Quality Control Board. I was on there back in the 2010 days. I currently serve on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And I serve on three transportation commissions. So we, through this work, we've been working on environmental stewardship. And that drives many of the decisions that I make from advancing equitable access to electrification, to protecting clear, clean air and water in our natural environments throughout Santa Clara County. So ensuring that Permanente Creek, our local wildlife and vegetation at the quarry site are what we are set to achieve. And that's what we're going to be talking about this evening. We're excited to continue this conversation. I know my predecessor did this annually, I believe. And we will continue this. We're very fortunate this evening to be able to welcome representatives from the Lehigh Heidelberg Cement Plant and Quarry. And they will be sharing updates on its operations, future plans, and the impacts on the surrounding area. As you can see, we have a great list of panelists here from various government agencies, environmental organizations, and again, for the first time, Lehigh Heidelberg. So welcome to all of you, and thank you so much for being here. They'll introduce themselves in a few minutes, but I wanted to give a few instructions on how we will receive tonight's community input from all of you. So while we may not have time for live mic questions from everyone today, your written submissions, and you should see cards on your, on your seats, please write your questions on there. And we will, we are committed to reviewing and responding to each one because those, your questions, your comments are an essential part of this dialogue. I just want to ask that we be respectful of both our panelists' responses and the questions from the audience members. And we kindly ask that you refrain, refrain from any cheering or boos or any kind of expressions during the discussion so that everyone feels welcome to be able to speak and to be heard. Each of us guests, our guests should have a card, as I mentioned, and a pen. So please be sure to write your questions. And I have my staff here, John Ishi, Ariana, Benji, and I have some, my interns, our summer interns, they're raising their hands. So please wave your cards when you're done, and they'll come and collect them. And again, we'll try to answer as many as we can tonight. But if we don't get to them, we will be sure to post them in written form on our website, I believe. There, yes, we have a county planning page, which my office will share the link to in our newsletter. So we have a weekly newsletter. I believe we have a QR code outside. Please sign up for that newsletter so that we can get you the information on where you can find the answers to the questions that are asked this evening. And you can also opt to receive email updates about Lehigh Quarry directly, I believe, with this QR code. And then also, this meeting, this evening is being recorded. Thank you to the city of Cupertino for doing this. And this video will be posted on our city's YouTube channel and our website. And that link will also be shared with all of you if you sign up with the QR code. So again, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Thank you to the city of Cupertino once again for hosting us here at the Quinlan Center. And now I'll hand it off to my chief of staff, Mariko Seac, who will be our emcee tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So as we know, this issue requires regional cooperation. And so what I'd like to do is just to introduce those elected officials that are in the room with us so that you can also see who is present and who believes the importance of this meeting. If you could just reserve one clap per individual, and if I call you, if you could just highlight who you are so that if any of the constituents do want to talk to you afterwards. So I do know that Assembly Member Patrick Arons is on his way, so he'll be here shortly. From Supervisor Dwong of District 2, her chief of staff is here. Supervisor Otto Lee, District 3 staffer is here, Alexander, who also happens to be a Foothill Deansa Community College trustee. We have from Senator, State Senator Josh Becker's office, we have Alex. From the city of Cupertino, we do have former Mayor Rod Zinks here, so thank you for joining us. From Campbell, Mayor Sergio Lopez, thank you. From the town of Los Gatos, we do have Vice Mayor Moore. And Assembly Mayor, Assembly Member Arons just walked in the room. And then from Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, we have Directors Kurt Riffel and Yuriko Kishimoto. So thank you for joining us. And we also have Boo Thai, who is a San Jose Evergreen Community College trustee. So thank you all for your participation. Okay, so to move this project forward, I want to be mindful of, of time. And so just as we mentioned, we'll be introducing panelists, and then we'll begin with the program. Supervisor, do you want to introduce panelists?
All right, thank you, Mariko. So today's panel brings together experts from our county departments, regional agencies, nonprofit and municipal sectors. Everyone will briefly share which organization they're from, their areas of focus, and current efforts relevant to today's discussion. So let's start with this side. If we could start with Robert, and then we'll go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. My name is Rob Salisbury. I'm Principal Planner with Santa Clara County Department of Planning and Development. And I also manage the county's SMAR program, which is Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. So that really deals with land use, surrounding quarry uses in the cement plant, and also for Lehigh in particular, is focusing heavily recently on reclamation and their plans to reclaim the site.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Visers. I'm a lead deputy county counsel with the county council's office. I lead the environment and land use team in our office, and I work very closely with Rob on all matters related to Lehigh and have been doing so for getting close to four years.
Good evening. I'm Mickey Pierce. I am a program manager with County Environmental Health Department. My department generally oversees the daily, weekly, annual inspections for compliance with hazardous materials, storage, hazardous waste, underground storage tanks, and above-ground storage of hazardous materials.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sanjit Sen. I am the Senior Environmental Manager for the Lehigh Site, Heidelberg Materials. I've been with the company now for about three years, and I've been managing the reclamation and restoration projects of the site. I'm also responsible for the environmental permitting and compliance of the site. Prior to joining Heidelberg, I was an air quality consultant for about eight years. And my background is in chemical engineering, and I have a master's in environmental management.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Greg Ronska. I'm a vice president in our Sustainability and Public Affairs Department. I'm located in our corporate office in Irving, Texas. I've been with the company for eight years and have 27 years of consulting experience prior to that. And I've got an education background in geosciences and environmental and occupational health. Good to be here. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Ben Fu. I'm the Community Development Director of the city of Cupertino. The city owns a stretch of the public right of way that leads up to the property. Thank you.
Good evening. Jessica Watkins with the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. We are the state agency that's responsible for protecting water quality, surface waters and groundwater in the nine Bay Area counties. I'm the chief of our groundwater protection division.
Hi, Nathan Veal. I'm a hydrogeologist, also with the water boards in our groundwater protection division. And specifically, I'm the acting supervisor for the land disposal program. And I oversee Lehigh Quarry's compliance with our waste discharge requirements programs. That has to deal with their potential impacts to groundwater, specifically from the quarry pit and the two material storage areas. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you again to all of you for being here this evening with us. Also, at this conversation, we have members of three stakeholder organizations who've been invited to act as interlocutors in this conversation. So joining us this evening, we have Brian Malone, Assistant General Manager at Mid Peninsula Open Space District, our county partner in monitoring the ridgeline easement we have at the Heidelberg property. Thank you, Brian. David Leifert, Senior Resource Management Specialist at, also at Mid Penn. Thank you for being here, David. Gary Bailey, the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter Representative and a plaintiff in the 2011 lawsuit that led to the restoration of Permanente Creek, which began last year, last week, I'm sorry, last week. We had a kickoff last week. Lisa Barboza, also from the Sierra Club, Chair of our Guadalupe Group. And then unfortunately, we had a illness happen, but we were supposed to have a member of the local 393 Plumbers Union, but we will be asking those questions in his place. So again, thank you all for joining us this evening. A friendly reminder to the panelists, if you are not speaking, please make sure you turn off your mics so we don't have the echoes. And with that, I'll send it, bring it back to Mariko.
Thank you. Okay. And during, during the introductions, I do want to recognize that two elected officials did walk in. So Kitty Moore, Vice Mayor of Cupertino, thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you for hosting us, as well as Julia Miller with El Camino Healthcare District. So thank you for joining us. So as the format, as for the format for our town hall this evening, we intend to break down the discussion into three different segments. Topic one will be an update on the current operations at the Lehigh Heidelberg Cement Quarry. Topic two will be an update on recent activities related to the Permanente Creek Restoration Plan, which, if you have not heard yet, is a project that was kicked off last week. Topic three is an update on the application for an amendment to the Permanent Quarry Reclamation Plan Amendment. And each segment will be addressed by the appropriate subject matter expert, and we will field written questions upon completions of their remarks for everyone. So as always, just fill out those cards, and we'll continue to pick them up. Okay? And Supervisor?
Thank you. And I was asked to speak louder, so I'll try to do that, but please remind me if my voice goes down. So we wanted to start out to provide a quick overview of how we got here today. So the Permanente Quarry was established in 1939 by industrialist Henry J. Kaiser to supply cement for major infrastructure projects, including the Shasta Dam and various wartime construction efforts during World War II. From the outset, the site played a critical role in regional development, becoming one of the largest limestone quarries in the Western United States through the mid 20th century and supporting the rapid urbanization of the Bay Area and beyond. However, alongside this industrial activity came mounting environmental concerns from surrounding communities. The site drew increased scrutiny for air emissions, including mercury and dust, and polluting Permanente Creek. Community members and environmental groups began pressing the government for stronger regulatory oversight. By the 2010s, the Permanente Quarry and the cement operations were the subject of ongoing legal and regulatory action. Key issues, as this audience well knows, include pollution, visual impacts to the scenic hillsides, and habitat disruption. COVID happened, of course, and a major turning point came in November 2022, when Lehigh permanently shut down the cement kiln and ended clinker production. In August 2023, Heidelberg Materials signed an agreement with Santa Clara County to close the cement kiln permanently. In 2023, the company submitted a new application for a reclamation plan amendment, we call it RPA, that outlines long-term plans to restore and clean up the mining pit and site covering over 900 acres of the 3,600 acre property. Public outreach, permitting, and environmental planning are now well underway for that process over the coming months. So we'll start with topic one of the evening. And the topic is an update of current activities at Heidelberg. So topic area one, covering the ongoing operations at the site, we'll start with Heidelberg Materials, who, as we have two, two representatives this evening, and again, thank you for being here, we will ask questions, also the regulators as appropriate. So Greg and Sanjit, could you please provide a more in-depth overview of the current ongoing operations at Lehigh?
Sure, Supervisor. So there are four main activities that are currently ongoing at the plant. One is aggregate production. You know, Heidelberg Materials was, was undertaking that production the last several years. And most recently, this spring, that now is through a tenant lease that we have with Vulcan Materials. So Vulcan's currently running that aggregate operation. So that's the first activity that's ongoing out there. The second is the creek restoration that Supervisor just mentioned. The kickoff was, was last week for that. So we have a creek restoration project that's underway. That's a multi-year project that, you know, entails seasonal work during the dry season. The third activity is demolition or pre-demolition activities of the cement plant that was mentioned that was shut down in 2020 as a result of COVID. And now that's, of course, a permanent shutdown. So we're moving on to the next stage there, which is demolition and preparing for that demolition. So you could really consider this year as pre-demolition activities, removing contents from the buildings, preparing for the permit applications, and getting ready to do, you know, various assessments of the buildings to remove, you know, if there's any asbestos containing materials, et cetera. So demolition. And then the fourth, of course, is the reclamation itself. Right now, we're working through the, the RPA approval process. And currently, that's in the environmental studies phase of that process. So that's underway. The county has a consultant ESA that, that does that work. That's, that's underway currently. So those are the four primary activities that are currently underway at the plant.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Before we go further, I wanted to go back and talk about your name. So it's now Heidelberg Materials. But as some people may recall, back in 2010, Steve Jobs appeared before the Cupertino City Council and was asked what he thought about the cement plan. And he responded, do you mean Kaiser? So it's been Kaiser, Kaiser Permanente, Lehigh Hanson, Lehigh Southwest, and now Heidelberg Materials. Is this all one company? Is this your company?
Yes, through the acquisition that you just mentioned, Supervisor. So yes, it's the same facility, and those companies, you know, went through acquisitions or simply, most recently, the Heidelberg Materials, that was just a name change that we formally went over with, you know, all our operations globally. So not just even North America, but that was, that was simply a name change from Lehigh Hanson to Heidelberg Materials, same company.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to hand it back to Mariko. We're tag teaming so you don't get bored with one of us or too long.
Thank you. And so what activities are currently taking place on site? And we understand Heidelberg continues to operate your aggregate business?
Yeah, that's the four activities that I mentioned. So aggregate business through the, now currently, the Vulcan lease, the creek restoration project, demolition or pre-demolition activities, and the rec plant amendment itself, including the environmental studies that are underway.
Thank you. And then are there some structures on the property that are to be taken down?
Correct. So with the current cement plant, there's approximately, you know, 35 or 40 structures. Some are, you know, we say structures because, you know, depending on what you would call a building, you know, that getting into that, the nuances of that definition. But 35 to 40 structures are what would currently be removed. We met with the county last week, actually, to talk through that process of, you know, what that application process looks like. It's going to be through the, the building department, we know. And so we've started that process to, to look at, you know, what's required for, for a full application. And again, we'll continue with pre-demolition activities, including the assessments of the buildings and removal of contents, et cetera, that we can recycle, reuse, et cetera.
Okay. And as that continues, do you anticipate sharing this information to the public?
Yeah, through the, through the permit process, of course, that full application for the demolition will become public information and, and certainly be available.
Thank you. And so for the regulators, I'm just going to go down the line. Do we have any new violations or actions since the last public meeting of March 2024? And if so, could you please describe and outline any remediation from that, from those violations?
Thank you. From the perspective of the County Department of Planning and Development, no, no new violations since 2024, and no new activities, really. We're continuing to do environmental review of the Reclamation Plan Amendment. As was mentioned, we continue to inspect the quarry site on a monthly basis and then annually, as is required under state law.
From county and environmental health perspective, we've done a couple of routine inspections since the last meeting. One inspection did result in an equipment failure, which was corrected during the inspection, shown to be compliant. The other one had some violations, which we are addressing or have partially addressed, with the removal of a large ammonia tank on site. And I understand the plant came in this afternoon, but I have not had the opportunity to review that to ensure that it meets all of our needs.
Okay.
From the city of Cupertino's perspective, there's no new violations, but we have received a number of complaints, for the most part regarding noise and traffic. And we've been coordinating with the county planning, Sheriff's Office, as well as the property owner.
For the water boards, no new violations since 2024 actions. We've also conducted some site inspections, one just a month ago alongside EPA, mostly focused on their stormwater discharge points. Also, we just received an updated copy of their preliminary closure plan, which, is this still on? Okay. Which details the closure of their quarry and the two material storage areas.
Thank you. And a follow-up for DEH, is there a possibility of any issues such as asbestos or mercury because of the buildings being demolished?
There is the possibility that those materials exist in those buildings. Generally, those will be addressed at the time the building is demolished. The Department of Environmental Health will do sort of a pre-demolish closure, at which time we try, we try to make sure that all hazardous materials and hazardous wastes are removed and that the, that the building itself is ready for a clean demolition.
And a follow-up question for planning. Is there a mechanism in the county by which the public could be notified of new actions taking place at Heidelberg Materials?
Absolutely. The county maintains a so-called interested parties list, and that can be, people can sign up on the county's Lehigh webpage. We send periodic updates to anybody who's signed up at that site when significant things happen, including when the reclamation plan was filed, when it's deemed complete, things of that nature. And then in addition, every year, a progress report is presented to the County Planning Commission. That's in December. And then its primary, its primary purpose is to go over compliance with conditions of approval. We also provide other updates about other applications and other activities at the, at the site. And so certainly, as demolition permits get applied for and demolition occurs, that will be one of the topics we'll be providing information about to the planning commission during those annual reports.
Okay, thank you. And the next question for Cupertino, you mentioned that there were no new violations, but there are other matters sometimes that you get calls for. Could you just elaborate? What are those other matters?
Yeah, sure. We've been receiving some complaints regarding noise, and those involve around truck noise as they access through Cupertino streets to onsite as part of a construction process or a demolition process, as mentioned before. So we are coordinating with the county, planning, Sheriff's Office, as well as the property owner, trying to find some solutions for, to resolve that issue.
Okay, thank you. And my last follow-up question for county council, from a legal perspective for the county, what key points are important for the public here to understand?
So one thing that we like to remind people, you know, that we talk about one site, and so there's a cement plant or not, there was a cement plant. Obviously, the, the kiln has stopped and various operations have stopped. And then there's the quarry and associated, you know, the rock plant, the aggregate business. And from the county's perspective, these, although they're on one site, operate under two different kind of legal regimes. So the cement plant had a use permit. It is not part of the reclamation plan. And so when you hear us talking about the reclamation plan in topic three, we're talking about the quarry and all of those associated activities. The cement plant demolition is separate from the reclamation plan. And so just something to keep in mind when you're wondering how these processes fit together.
Thank you. Thanks. And as you know, a lot of times, air quality is, has been the issue of concern. Supervisor Abicoga does sit on the air quality district. And so Supervisor, can you just speak a minute about some air quality issues?
Yes, thank you. So the area that the Air Quality Management District has jurisdiction over is in regards to the demolition of structures that might have asbestos. And there is a program where the, the, the air district needs to be notified of the demolition, and then the exact dates of when that demolition will take place. And then there's an online notification system, so anyone can look up whatever demolition is happening and at what dates that will happen. And all demolition needs to follow the air district's asbestos regulation 11-2, which is one of our rules that we have at the air district. So I think we're ready to move on to topic two now, which is Permanente Creek Restoration. And last week, as we just mentioned, I was able to attend the Heidelberg Materials kickoff for the long-awaited restoration of Permanente for the long awaited restoration of Permanente Creek that was ordered back in 2015. And so many people in the community have looked forward to this day and the work has finally started. So I think many people are looking forward to seeing the mining waste and concrete barriers removed from the creek. I know that the public looks forward to a restored habitat that will be hospitable to fish and other wildlife, plant vegetation that is native to the area, and water that can flow, that can flow from the slopes of the Black Mountain to remain clean as it travels through the property and into the San Francisco Bay. We're asking Heidelberg if they can share the work that they're doing in regards to the restoration. But before we do that, I'd like to ask our Santa Clara County Principal Planner, Robert, about the creek restoration plan that was approved last year.
Thank you Supervisor. The Permanente Creek Restoration Plan is a significant restoration effort that's going to restore roughly 135 acres of land, about 9,000 linear feet of Permanente Creek. It's going to remove manmade structures, culverts, and other similar things. It's going to widen the creek channel. It's going to try to restore biological habitat and functionality and restore, widen the creek channel and just improve habitat, revegetate, remove non-native species and replant with native species and hopefully return the creek to something like it was before it was developed and altered by the mining activities at the site.
Thank you. And so question for Heidelberg. So what is about to happen? It's a big undertaking and a lot of planning is required. I didn't expect you to describe the entire project, but is there work that you would like to highlight for the community right now?
Yeah, absolutely. It is a project that's been a long time coming for us and we're committed to get started on it. And that's why we had the kickoff meeting last week where Supervisor was there. As Rob described, the creek restoration project encompasses about 9,000 linear feet, which is about 1.5 miles of Permanente Creek that's within Lehigh or Heidelberg's property. Some of the main goals for us is removing some of the mining overburden and sediment material that has entered this creek. Over decades of mining operations that we've had at the site, other, other activities in this project will include removal of manmade structures that were put in place at the time for operational purposes, things like culverts and concrete line channels, they will be coming out. We will also be replacing some of the invasive species that have been growing there and replacing them with native riparian species. The creek channel will also be widened. This gives more floodplain benches for natural sedimentation to occur, as well as giving additional pool habitat for any species that may return, adding more channel complexity at the site, as well as just canopy cover, helping to keep the water cooler, or water temperatures cooler in the creek. The creek restoration was designed specific to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's Restoration Manual. Those are the high level what we're trying to accomplish over this project for this year specifically. We're again, removing some manmade structures, a couple of culverts are coming out like culvert seven, increasing the, widening the channel. And then the last thing that we're going to be doing is adding more vegetation to the southern banks to increase the canopy there. And of course, revegetation of all the new graded slopes and the channel in the area. So that's high level and kind of year one, what we're intending to achieve.
Thanks. And if anyone's interested about the specific plant species, I'm sure you can answer that afterwards.
Absolutely. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And for the water board representatives, how does the water board oversee and track Heidelberg's efforts as they undergo as, with this plan?
We oversee the project through a general statewide order. So it's a permit. We call them waste discharge requirements. So they enrolled under that. We issued a notice of applicability, which is essentially a notice that they, they're enrolled under the order in March of 2025. And we actually required a long-term restoration plan as early as 1999. So it's been a few years, but it's happening. And we'll be overseeing this by reviewing annual reports, ensuring that they're complying with the requirements of the order and what they proposed in their notice of intent to enroll. And they're going to be notifying, notifying us when work starts on each phase of the project. So our staff will have the opportunity to go out there and conduct inspections as needed.
Thanks. And I know a question that we heard last week at the event, and I'm going to pose this to Heidelberg. The question I keep hearing back again and again is, will fish return?
We'll give them the opportunity to return. That'll be up to the fish ultimately. You know, it is an intermittent stream. And obviously during, you know, dry times when there's no water, I'm sure the fish will retreat downstream to where they can find water. But again, with what Sanjeet mentioned on restoration of that habitat, the widening, widening, the complexity of the channel, et cetera, removal of any materials that have entered the creek, we will give them every opportunity and then it'll be up to the fish to see what they can do.
Thank you. And so, you know, waiting for the fish to return, if they do, question for planning, how do we, until we get to that point, how do we track restoration work? How do, and how would the public know that the process is going in a positive manner?
So as with any grading project, and which, which this is in some sense, there are periodic inspections done by land development engineering in our department. We'll also continue to do monthly inspections. And one of the things we'll, we'll certainly be continuing to look at is a restoration project. And then I also mentioned the annual report that goes to the planning commission. We'll be looking to Lehigh to provide us information about the progress of the restoration project. And then we'll be reporting that to the planning commission and then of course, also the public through that public meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. And as the supervisor mentioned, this project and this effort has been something that we've done in partnership with several of our community partners that we've invited as our interlocutors. And so I'd like to ask Gary Bailey, a representative from the Sierra Club, to join us for his question to Heidelberg.
Hello. My name's Gary Bailey and I'm representing Sierra Club here. And my question is, why is the restoration project not starting at the very upstream extreme of the restoration plan above pond 13 as identified in the consent decree? And this, and if it doesn't start at the very upstream end, how is the previous restored area going to be protected from sedimentation and pollution from the later upstream work?
Thank you for that question. That's, that's a good question. And first and foremost, to clarify, we do have, we have designed the restoration of the creek based on California Department of Fish and Wildlife Restoration Manual. So the reason we're starting downstream and the downstream reaches is because you want to be able to increase the channel and have those floodplain benches, which allows for some of the natural sedimentation to settle down as, as you widen the channel and you have these gradual slopes. You have a lot of the material and natural sedimentation that will directly settle as the stream meanders through. The other reason we're starting at the bottom is we have the southern banks that I explained, we'll be revegetating those with natural vegetation. And that has, that provides the canopy cover for those reaches to avoid getting solar gain, for lack of a better word. That basically means that the water temperatures will be there cooler. So all the fishes downstream will be able to have cooler temperatures. Lastly, the main, the main reason is you want to be able to, significant portions of the creek restoration, you want to get those done sooner so that they can establish themselves, so that they're ready for water that does make its way. As Greg pointed out correctly, it's an intermittent stream. So for the wet season, we want to be able to establish these areas with the appropriate vegetation so that they are able to receive those upstream flows during the wet season. So that's kind of the reason why we're going downstream. And just one more last clarification, the consent decree does also provide for an opportunity for if there are, as we've gone through the SEQA process over the last few years, all the different agencies have had a chance to review. And their determination was to start in the lower reaches and it allows for, if there is a disconnect, the permit is the approved condition.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, for your question. Before we move on, I just wanted to recognize former Mayor Cupertino Mayor Orin Mahoney. Thank you for being here. And oh, Mayor of Palo Alto Ed Lowing and Vice Mayor of Sunnyvale Linda Sell. Thank you all for taking the time out to be here this evening. As we talk about regulators, I just wanted to mention that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is also one of the permitting agencies and issued a permit for the restoration project back in May 2025. So with that, we'll move on to our final topic. Topic three is the reclamation plan application. And I know many people are interested in this topic. This is where we'll get to learn about how Heidelberg is planning to restore the mountain that was mined for nearly a century, including the leftover rock and materials that were not used for cement making. This is a job that will be decades to accomplish as they work to reconstruct a massive pit by filling it. We'll also learn about the view shed and the ridge line for which Santa Clara County holds an easement and now shares with the Mid Peninsula Open Space District to enforce. As of January this year, Heidelberg's reclamation plan amendment application has been deemed complete by the county's planning department. Again, Robert Salasbury here with our planning department can tell us more about that. So Robert, what does it mean that the application is complete? And what are the key components of the reclamation amendment plan application that you see as important for the public to know about?
Thank you Supervisor. What it means for an application to be deemed complete is that the application materials that are specified in the application checklist have been submitted, that the county has sufficient information to analyze the project against its codes and requirements. Now, of course, there is still the SEQA process that is underway. So it will also allow the county to fully analyze the project. But again, complete just means they've submitted the materials that are required on the checklist for the application type. And then your question about the components of the, of the reclamation plan amendment, it's, it's different from the currently approved rec plan in a few significant ways. Number one, it's proposing to eliminate from the rec plan boundary of southern area that's across Permanente Creek. That's an area that was previously, I believe Lehigh was considering mining there, but they never actually did. So there are access roads and some mining pads where there were some exploratory drilling. So should those areas get reclaimed according to the current rec plan, then we would be able to, should, should their amendment be approved, move that boundary. So then those areas would no longer be subject to reclamation under the proposed plan. Again, if they get reclaimed according to the current standard. The other significant, another significant change is that there's a different planting palette. So as a component of any restoration project, including mine restoration, you're of course, removing any non-native species and planting native species. Under the 2012 reclamation plan, they submitted a particular planting palette. And so that planting palette is being revised under the 23, 2023 rec plan, should it, should it be approved. And then the other most significant change is that Lehigh is proposing to utilize a lot of off-site fill to backfill the main quarry pit. Under the current approved rec plan, it's mostly onsite material that's going to get backfilled in the main pit. And then it does include some importation of fill. But under the 2023 plan, they're proposing to import approximately 30 million cubic yards of clean fill and then use approximately 10 million cubic yards of onsite material to backfill the main pit. So obviously that is quite a significant change.
It is. So thank you. And for Heidelberg, you know, I'm curious, what are the key components of your reclamation amendment plan as you see it? Anything different than, than how we see it as regulators?
Yeah, I think Rob did a great job of covering certainly the, you know, that 350 acre area that's on the south side of the creek. You know, back in 2019, when we were still operating the cement plant, we contemplated additional mining, both within the pit itself and also an area south of, of the creek. And that's the exploration work that he mentioned. We're no longer going to do that additional mining. So that's a really big change from when, you know, the concept in 2019. So that gets removed from the rec plan area because it will be reclaimed before that is implemented. So that's one big change. You know, another one is, again, no additional mining in the pit, right? In the sense of blasting and removal of materials for cement production. So that means that that north wall, which was, we looked at, you know, laying back for both stability, but also to access additional reserves from that area for cement production. That's no longer the case. So I would also throw in as far as, you know, a significant difference from, again, the concept in 2019 was no layback of that, that north wall for additional mining and slope stability. So that's another big one as well. And then, as Rob mentioned, a combination of backfill materials, including materials that would be generated onsite largely from the west material storage area. And also, and that's really necessary for slope stability, right? So as part of the reclamation, there's going to be a lot of slope stability work and we need to, you know, make some slopes less steep. And in order to achieve that, we will be removing materials. So some of that material, about a quarter of the material that ultimately will be replaced in the pit or the buttress for the, the north wall, we'll talk about that in a minute, that's going to come from materials in that largely the WMSA area. Other materials will be brought in. And there's, you know, really a need for not just, you know, the, I think about the volume of material that left that area in the form of cement, right? It's no longer there. So there's a, a gap there in terms of material, but also the type of material we need. We want certain types of material for certain purposes. So low permeability material is really important for, you know, capping. Once largely the areas are filled, there'll be some capping with low permeability material. That's a special material that we can accept in the form of imported material and also material that's suitable and best suited for vegetation with organics, et cetera, that's going to be, allow vegetation to, to take hold when we revegetate. So there's a few reasons. And also there's, quite frankly, there's a, there's a need in the area, right? There's material that's currently going to Dunbarton, for instance, that is generated from construction projects in the area. And there, you know, there needs to be a place for that material to go. Otherwise, it will be trucked, you know, offsite some distance and at, at, you know, a cost of additional emissions from truck traffic, et cetera. So I think I got it all and I know I'm up on time, but thank you.
Thanks. And Mr. Salasbury, so I believe a draft EIR is next? Is that what's next in the process? And if so, could you just elaborate?
Yes, that's correct. Under state law, the California Environmental Equality Act, a project, a project of the scale requires thorough environmental review. And so the county is undertaking with assistance of a consultant, preparation of environmental impact report that's going to look at the current rec plan that Lehigh has proposed and how it's different in its environmental impacts from the approved reclamation plan. Currently, we're in the scoping period for that EIR, which is a period where public and other interested parties can provide input to the department and the consultant about what topics the EIR should cover. And then during that process, the EIR work will also occur. And we expect that that EIR should be ready for public circulation and comment with about January of 2026. And then it circulated for a 45 day comment period. And after that comment period, a additional document called a final EIR is required. And in that final EIR, the lead agency, in this case, the county, is required to index, review, and then respond to any comments that are provided during that period. And so depending on the volume of comments received, of course, it can take quite a while if we receive a lot. But we're anticipating, you know, a three to four month process, possibly longer if there are more comments for that. And then once that is done, then the project is prepared. And there's a staff analysis that's conducted. And then it's brought to the planning commission for an up or down vote. And we anticipate that to be in the end of 2026, I would think. And any member of the public, of course, can provide comment. any member of the public, of course, can provide comment on the EIR, and then also provide comment to the Planning Commission either before or during the time that that project is brought to them for their review and consideration.
And is it too early to ask, when, when do you think a DEIR would go out so that those in the audience can anticipate? Would it be, should we expect it in the fall?
Currently, we think the draft EIR is going to be released for public comment in January of 2026.
Thank you. And now to the Water Board. Again, we talked about the creek. Jessica, do you mind sharing Water Board's role and interest in the amendment application?
Nate, we'll be discussing that.
Thanks.
Thanks. Role, we don't have a direct role in the approval of the rec plan amendment, but we do have an interest in it, which is in ensuring that reclamation activities are protective of water quality. So that includes protecting beneficial uses of streams, creeks, groundwater, and any other surface water bodies that are connected to the site. So for example, with the backfilling of the quarry, our interest comes in developing with Heidelberg criteria for the fill that'll be used to backfill the quarry, both imported material and material onsite, just making sure that anything that's going into the quarry is protective of water quality. And we do that through overseeing operations during backfilling and then monitoring during and after reclamation. Yeah, and all these are requirements that are put forth in several permits that we have called waste discharge requirements. And those are all available on our website that the public can access.
Thank you. And from a county council perspective, Elizabeth, can you share what key points are important for the public to understand as we go through this process?
Sure. So one thing is that Lehigh does not operate under a use permit for its quarry because it has what we call vested rights. And so the reclamation plan amendment is an approval that is under basically state law, where the county is the lead agency implementing the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. And so our role is to review the reclamation plan amendment and determine whether it meets all of the standards under state law and our county ordinance. And then, you know, if it does, then we approve it under those state law standards.
Thank you. And Robert, my last question to you before I hand it back to the supervisor. Do you anticipate, or I guess, can we anticipate any emissions from the reclamation plan work? And if so, how is that addressed?
Certainly, there will be emissions. The reclamation is going to require a lot of heavy equipment. And it's a requirement in any EIR that those emissions be quantified, and then the health risks associated with those emissions be evaluated. And then those impacts be mitigated to the maximum extent possible. We are still in the early stages of that environmental work, so we don't haven't determined exactly the quantity of emissions or what those impacts will be. But it, again, it is certainly a requirement that needs to be analyzed and will be analyzed in the EIR for the project.
I have a question for Heidelberg and then for our Planning Department. What do you think is the potential for using the rail spur that is on the property already to bring in clean fill for the reclamation plan amendments?
Yeah, sure. You know, it's certainly an option and a possibility. I'm not a logistics expert, but, you know, we do have folks that spend a lot of time on logistics, and we're certainly preserving, you know, that right and optionality. And it very well might be one of the ways that we, you know, get material onto the site and also, you know, off the site, right? The demolition itself, for instance, is going to create a lot of, you know, scrap steel that can be reused. And that may also be a way that we are able to ship material offsite, for instance. So, yeah, we're certainly preserving the, the rights and privileges that we have with Union Pacific and use of that rail for future use up to and including, you know, transport of fill materials, but also things like, you know, scrap, processed scrap metal for offsite. So absolutely.
And Robert, your thoughts on that?
I don't have a lot more to add. It certainly would be one way to reduce emissions is to use the rail. It's certainly a lot more efficient mode of transportation. It will just depend on the logistics and the feasibility of using that rail line for the purpose of importing clean fill from all over the Bay Area, should that be approved.
Thank you. I also wanted to add that the Air District plays a role in the reclamation plan in the following ways. According to information that my Air District staff sent me, so the Air District's role would be to review the SEQA document within 30 days of public notice. The fugitive dust control plan includes permitted sources and truck traffic during operation. If the amendment application includes refilling the quarry, it may require that Heidelberg import rocks, and if so, permits would be needed for the new stockpiles. The Air District would have jurisdiction for fugitive dust, subject to Air District Regulation 6. I think there's usually a dash something, but I guess it's just Regulation 6. Any closure plan developed would have dust mitigation requirements. And if the amendment application contains changes, that will require permits from the Air District. If the amendment application doesn't require any new permitting, the Air District would not play a major role, other than to review the SEQA document once it's on public notice. So now we'd like to turn to our interlocutors from two organizations. We have Brian Malone, the Assistant General Manager from the Open Space District, and Lisa Barboza, the Chair of the Guadalupe Committee on the Sierra Club's Regional Chapter, who have questions. Welcome.
Good evening. Brian Malone, Assistant General Manager with Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. Thank you, Supervisor, for hosting this important, important meeting. In the past, the Water Board has cited concerns over selenium contamination from the limestone stored onsite. What geotechnical or environmental analyses are available that provide a rationale for not using those leftover mining materials to refill the pit? And furthermore, will the environmental impact report consider alternatives such as the reuse of the material of the West Materials Storage Area, particularly if it could reduce truck trips and associated environmental impacts? And will the risk of the West Materials Storage Site eroding and causing leaching of selenium be evaluated in the environmental impact report if it's left in place?
Thanks. That's a really good question. So maybe briefly talk about selenium without a chemical or chemistry lesson, selenium contamination. So when selenium is bound up in the rocks underground, it's a lot harder for water to leach it out. But once you mine that material and take it above ground, there's more surface area available for water to react, attack basically the rock and pull the selenium out. So that's what we're talking about when we say selenium contamination. It's like usually rainfall precipitating through the rock, or if it's, the mined material is put back in the pit, groundwater interacting with the, the rock to pull selenium out and then into the aquifer. So what analyses are available to back up not using some of this material? I think probably the best thing that the public could look at is a conceptual site model report that a consultant for Heidelberg Materials put up in, or did in 2020. So that report, which again is on our website, has a whole suite of geotechnical analyses, figures, lab reports, sampling reports. And, yeah, you can, you can look through all that. And it has the evaluation that eventually suggests that it wouldn't be appropriate to use all of that material for quarry backfill because it could introduce unsafe levels of selenium. And then to your, to the second part of the question about the EIR, I'm not involved in, the Water Boards is not involved in directing the, the SEQA process, but I'm sure that most of those issues, or I would expect most of those issues to be addressed. And certainly, we will be reviewing it to see that there are any impacts to water quality that the Water Boards would want to be made aware of.
Thank you, Brian. And we did invite our partners from labor to participate. And the question that I have, I have two questions from, for Heidelberg from our labor partners. First is, there's a great deal of construction activities at the quarry site for a long time. Is it Heidelberg's intention to use union labor for those activities?
Yeah, so we currently have had union labor, obviously, you know, when the cement plant operated. We continued that union labor when we ran the aggregate operations, and that continues with the Vulcan operations of the aggregate. So just on that side of things, union labor has always been a part of the, the process and continue to be involved. And also with the creek restoration project, again, that's another project that's going to involve union labor. So, and likewise, the other future projects that we talked about, the demolition and the reclamation itself certainly are all, you know, opportunities that are very well suited for union labor. And we strongly support using union labor when possible. So, yeah, I see a lot of opportunities, starting with this year, the creek restoration, continuing with the aggregate production, and, and then moving on to demolition and eventually reclamation. So certainly.
And if I can ask Lisa to join again, and Lisa Barboza from the Sierra Club.
Hi, my name's Lisa Barboza. I'm the Chair of the Guadalupe Regional Group, part of the Loma Fronter Chapter of the Sierra Club. And my thanks very much to Supervisor Abi Koka for having us here today. I have a question about the dirt and the fill. I note that it's about 30 million cubic yards. That's about 25 football stadiums filled to the brim. My question is, how do you ensure that the fill you get is clean and not contaminated? How do you know you're not introducing other contaminations into the site? And also, given that there may not be enough clean fill, how do you compete with projects like having to build levees for sea level rise and things of that nature? Thank you.
Sure. And I think Nathan talked a little bit about this, but we will definitely be working with the Water Board. There's acceptance criteria. So when fill is generated from all these projects, the BART projects that are coming up in the future, or any construction project, you know, that material is sampled and screened ahead of use, and it has to meet those, those acceptance criteria. So we, you're absolutely right. You know, not every material that's generated from a cut project, wherever that might be, is suitable for fill, and it needs to meet that criteria. So to answer your question, sampling would be a part of that acceptance. And developing that criteria with the Water Board, very important. And so there is a very strict screening process that is part of that, that process. So, you know, before any material is accepted, it definitely will be sampled and run through that screening process and criteria.
Thank you. And then David, do you mind asking your question?
Good evening, everyone. David Leefert, Senior Resource Management Specialist with Mid Penn Open Space District. Question about slope stability, which we've already talked about tonight. So since the ridgeline easement began in 1972, that Mid Penn shares the responsibility with the county to monitor, multiple large-scale slope failures have occurred well beyond that easement boundary. And recent surveys confirm ongoing slope movement and expanding landslide activity, particularly within the northwest wall and within the West Materials Storage Site. So these are monitoring surveys since 2022. So my question is both for planning and for Heidelberg, and maybe we can go in that order. What interim slope stabilization measures will be required to protect public lands and the ridgeline easement during the decades-long reclamation process?
That is a very good question. And we do not have any measures identified yet, although we are at the very beginning of our environmental analysis for the project. And that is certainly a concern for both the county and Mid Penn. And so I can tell you that through the EIR process, through the department's analysis, we will be examining that issue and proposing interim measures as required.
Yeah, I, there's, to answer your question, there's, I don't think a quick measure and, and really two solutions, right? One, one was laying back. You know, generally, when you have a failing slope, it's because it's steep typically. And to make it less steep, obviously, that means cutting some material away. We knew from, you know, the, the work that was done in 2019 that, you know, was not a popular decision for that, that part of the, the site. So laying back that ridge and reducing it in height would be, would be one way to solve that problem. The other way is, you know, what we've talked about already with the buttress, right? So buttress is, you know, building up material against that north wall to give it more stability. That buttress needs a base, obviously, and then, and so it's going to be a long process to build up, you know, the rest of the pit as a solid base, and then eventually get that buttress built up against the, the slope. So, you know, we, of course, continue to monitor the slopes as well. We haven't seen any recent movements. The really, you know, larger movement that happened was way back in the 80s. There's, you know, a slide sort of in the northwest corner that happened in the mid to late 80s. And that really was the last significant movement that actually happened out there. And it's been relatively stable since then. Of course, there's erosion and things like that. But from a terms, in terms of a large slope movement, that was, that was the big movement and event that happened in the 80s. You know, I haven't seen any new information that you might have from the, the 20s. But certainly, you know, if you have information that, that you'd like to share, we definitely have our own, you know, geotechnical consultants that, that will bring on board. And if there's an immediate, you know, movement or threat, we'd like to, you know, be part of the collaboration and process to evaluate exactly what that looks like. We'll continue to monitor. I know you folks have, you know, Cotton Shires, I think it is, that comes on and does a, an annual survey. We haven't seen, again, the results of that, but we're happy to sit down and discuss if you've got, you know, information that, that, that would indicate that there's a large movement that's occurring or has occurred in the last few years. We just haven't seen that.
Then a follow-up question for you, Robert. How will regulatory agencies ensure contingency planning if slope stability worsens or geotechnical assumptions prove inaccurate?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, rec, the reclamation plan, like any plan, is based on the information and the science that you have. And the reclamation that occurs needs to follow closely the approved plan. So hopefully none of those assumptions will be incorrect. But the ultimate remedy for significant deviation of the approved plan would be a reclamation plan amendment. But hopefully, through the approval process and also the implementation of the rec plan, we can avoid the need for that.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have two more questions from labor, one for Heidelberg. With so many acres of land and a good deal of it heavily impacted by mining operations and industrial uses, would Heidelberg be open to a community discussion of making that industrial land available for community needs? For example, housing, retail uses, schools, community parks?
Yeah, of course, we have no, you know, permanent future plans of any type right now. But we definitely want to, you know, make it known that we want to hear, you know, this, we hope to leave a legacy here that, you know, is, is something that benefits the community. And we want you to be part of that process. So again, we have no permanent plans, but I would say are open to discussion and certainly want to hear from the community and what's important to, to you folks who live and work in this area. So, you know, So, you know, we hope we'll have listening sessions. There will be opportunities, for sure. We've got a website we can share. There's various ways to get in touch with us, but, you know, so please look for those opportunities. Please take advantage of those opportunities, and we would love to hear from you. So I think, at this point, very open-minded about, you know, potential. I think there's great opportunity here for, you know, something for everyone. It's a big property, 3,510 acres, and, you know, hopefully, you know, I think there will be somebody, something for everyone here, and there's definitely enough space. So looking forward to hearing from the community on what's important to them. So thank you.
Thank you. And then the question that was, the third question, is I'm going to open it to MidPen. The question is, with so many acres of the property probably becoming permanent open space, would MidPen oppose using a small percentage of the land for pressing community needs like housing or school spaces or community parks?
So yeah, I first want to distinguish between the reclamation area and the cement plant, which are highly disturbed areas, and the reclamation requirements are not going to restore those lands to a pristine environment with full ecological function. However, there are pristine open space lands that Heidelberg owns that surround or in-between Rancho San Antonio Open Space Preserve and Montebello Open Space Preserve on the ridge, and then on the other side of the quarry as well. And those do hold a lot of open space value. We've tracked mountain lions through that whole area, very high value, probably very low value for development, high wildfire danger, steep slopes, that sort of thing. So it's certainly not a done deal that those are preserved for open space. I think it's going to take a lot of effort and interest from the community to preserve those open space areas in perpetuity. The other thing that's very important, because of the tracking we've done with wildlife with some of our partners, is that we would like to see wildlife corridors created through the reclamation area. So currently, if you watch mountain lion tracks, which you can actually go online and see at the Puma Project, they'll skirt around the edge of the quarry. We even, we shared pictures with Heidelberg of mountain lion having cubs on their property, kind of illustrating the value of the open space habitat. So we would like to create those corridors so they could move through the reclamation area. But I would say the greatest value for open space preservation lies outside of the reclamation area, which is the larger part of the Heidelberg property.
Okay, so thank you for answering that question. So that concludes our questions for the evening. We're going to be asking questions that you have been submitting through your three-by-five cards. I think we'll take it by topics. We'll direct them to the panelists as appropriate, and if a question doesn't land with the intended person, I invite any of the panelists to jump in to respond. So Supervisor.
Thank you. We collected your cards, questions, and tried to categorize them by topic, so, and I will do my best to direct them to the appropriate panelists, but please feel free to chime in if any of you have other comments to make. So the first one, we got quite a few cards about truck traffic, and they're all about the similar, and so I'll just read one, and I think that'll cover the general gist of this question. Truck traffic is continuing in the middle of the night. How do we get this to stop because neighbors cannot sleep? Truck brakes squealing at 4:00 a.m. are unacceptable. Again, truck hours start as early as 2:00 a.m. in the morning, so the truck traffic in the middle of the night, are there any mitigation measures that can be taken on this? I'll ask Heidelberg, I think.
Comes to us, I think. Yeah, so I can tell you that the aggregate operations is the first operations that start at the facility, and they report for duty at about 4:00 a.m. So first trucks out of the facility should be around 4:30 would be the earliest. So if there's traffic in the hours before, I would say 4:00 or 4:30, you know, I definitely need more information on, you know, maybe what trucks or activity that is, because it really would be ahead of, you know, the first start time for our current operations at the plant through the aggregate operations that Vulcan's conducting out there. So definitely need more on that. We did hear about, you know, some of the trucks that are leaving facility, and we did hear the noise complaints on that one. And just to get that out there, we have taken that information. It was recently given to us, and we have transferred that information and communicated that to Vulcan to address. And so we're working with them to address that brakes, I think, squeaky brake problem that we heard about. But, you know, operations that happen, what I'll call the middle of the night, you know, doesn't sound like it would be from these earliest operations that we have with the current aggregate production. So again, we would just need more information on exactly, you know, what type of trucks, and then we'd certainly, you know, like to look at that and understand ourselves, you know, what that might be.
So is it, can the residents contact you directly? Can they contact you directly?
Yeah, you can contact us. I know we got some information through the city and then the county, and then ultimately came to us. And again, we've already taken what we learned here recently to Vulcan, so, but yeah, they can contact us.
Great, thank you. And then in regards to future plans, and I think this might be for you, Robert, and the reclamation plan, but some have heard that this will require up to 1,200 trucks a day for the fill to be brought up. What is your, what are your thoughts on that, or is that the case right now that's being looked at?
Yeah, to import that level of, or that volume of fill, it is going to be a quite significant truck traffic. I think the estimates are about 600 trips a day, and certainly, that's a very large amount of traffic to run through neighborhood streets. The impacts from that traffic, both from an emission standpoint and a noise standpoint, certainly will be evaluated in the EIR, and then if it can be mitigated, it's required under law that the EIR propose mitigation measures that can mitigate that to a less insignificant level, if that's possible. And in the event that it cannot be mitigated, then that is disclosed in the environmental document, and it's provided, that information is provided to the decision-maker, who then have to weigh whether the proposal has sufficient benefits to offset that impact.
Thank you. We go on to air quality, and there is one question. I'm a frequent hiker in Rancho San Antonio and surrounding pass. Should I be concerned with air quality? And I've just referred to the comments that my Air District staff sent earlier about their jurisdiction over fugitive dust control and the need for a plan if there are permitted sources and truck traffic during operation. And so it would be mainly if there will be this type of operation, I think there will be, so the Air Quality Management District will oversee that. And then we go to trains, and this was asked earlier, but in the, for purposes of transparency, I'd ask it again. I'm interested in whether there's been any discussion or planning for a trail, oh, actually, this is a different question. I'm interested in whether there has been any discussion or planning for a trail along the rail line. To Heidelberg?
Yeah, I would say if it remains an active rail line, no, obviously, that would be a bad idea from a safety standpoint. So to the extent that, again, there's rail use, I don't think any trail would be possible just from, clearly from a safety standpoint, that would be a bad mix, right? People in close proximity to active rail. So I would say that's probably, you know, that wouldn't be possible, just from a safety standpoint.
And then there was a question about, are the railroad activities going to be used and continued? So.
Yeah, again, you know, I think we definitely, that's an option, and so I can see it having benefit for both, you know, import of fill material, but also, again, we talked about things like the scrap steel that would be, you know, processed at the site through the demolition. So yes, I think definitely there could be rail activity in the future, and we certainly want to, you know, preserve our ability to use that mode of transportation, so.
Great. And just a last call, if anyone else has any questions, please fill out a card and put it up so staff can pick that up, and we'll answer those at the end. Going to the creek, and some of this was answered, but we'll just make sure we reconfirm. Is there any discharge to Permanent Creek at this time? And then is there any risk of landslide of stored materials if we have storm events?
So to answer the first question, yes, we do have an individual NPDS permit, and we do treat our water on-site, which is discharged in two different locations, to Permanent Creek. And could you repeat the second question, please?
Is there any risk of landslide of stored materials if we have storm events?
And that's basically what we're doing with the reclamation and restoration projects, right? We do acknowledge that there are some steeper slopes that would need to be graded, and we have worked on a geotechnical plan for these projects, and they are going to be graded to a much more simpler slope, let's just say, more well-graded, and then covered with the appropriate material, as Greg alluded to earlier in the conversation, as did Nate, will have low permeability material and topsoil for the revegetation to take, and that's the very intent of the reclamation and restoration projects.
Thank you. Is there a plan to partner with Santa Clara Valley Water District to ensure Steelhead Passage to the restored creek, currently challenged by the two diversions? This is a water question? Oh, actually, less.
I'm not currently aware of a plan to work with Santa Clara Valley Water District on that, but we can certainly get back to you after we talk to them.
Heidelberg, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've got a plan for our property, you know, beyond the reaches of our ownership. Obviously, we, you know, we don't control those areas, but, you know, we're willing to discuss if, you know, I don't, and I don't even know how many owners, you know, maybe along that extent, you know, to the bay, but we'd certainly be willing to, you know, be part of the conversation, but, you know, obviously don't control beyond our current ownership.
Great. Moving on to, this is, I think for Ben, in the city of Cupertino, Heidelberg Materials is leasing the oldest home in Cupertino from the Historical Society. The home protected by the, this home is protected by the Cupertino General Plan. It has fallen into disrepair. When will it be fixed?
That's a really good question. We'll have to look into that and get back to you. I'm not sure about that one.
Okay, and we can post the answer on our website. Okay, and then we're going into reclamation, and so again, some of these have been answered, but please repeat your answers. Is there ongoing mining for the aggregate contract business, or is that material coming from the storage areas?
Yeah, that's coming from the storage area. So there's about approximately 7 million yards of material that, you know, was previously mined and placed along the western slope of the pit, so that material has already been shot and hauled out of the pit. So no, in the sense of, you know, blasting and making the pit larger, no additional mining, but just processing material that's already been hauled out of the pit.
How long is the aggregate business expected to operate? And is there a plan to eventually reclaim this property, which there is?
Yeah, plan to reclaim, you know, I think the permit that they operate under is up to a half a million tons a year, so, you know, again, at 7 million, it would be about 14, 15 years, obviously, depending on exactly how much they process and sell, so, you know, that could change, but that's a general idea, maybe, you know, how long that material would last.
And then this is about the reclamation. How long will it take? And what will the land, when will the land be completely reclaimed? What year? So 30, is it 30 years?
But we, again, this is very dependent on, you know, exactly what that intake of fill looks like, right? Obviously, so it's very difficult to put a timeframe on it. We just don't know. You know, the availability of fill in the area, you know, is typically 2 to 4 million, you know, yards of material per year. Again, not all that is going to be suitable, and there's definitely, you know, huge variations in that. You know, you have large BART projects come online, you know, that's 4 million yards of material just with that project, but, you know, it can ebb and flow with, you know, construction cycles, et cetera. So I would say very difficult, and whatever answer I give would be wrong, but, and definitely going to change. It will be a long time, obviously. It's a, you know, think about how long that's been an active mine and quarry, and it's going to take equally long to fill it, backfill it correctly.
Three years, 54 years.
It's, again, it's going to change depending on, okay, it's going to be a long time and will depend on exactly what that intake of fill material is. That's going to determine exactly what that looks like.
Next question. Will there be several years of maintenance and monitoring to ensure proper stream function? Vegetation is kept healthy. This seems particularly important because imported soil is likely to introduce new to the area invasive plants that will likely spread downstream if not controlled quickly.
I will say, before you jump, you're better suited, but, you know, if the material is, you know, not from the surface, right, it's not going to have seed content typically of, you know, material that would be currently topsoil. So if it's coming from a construction project, it wouldn't typically, you know, already have, you know, seeds from the surface. So I would think that that would be a low probability. Of course, an invasive species can take hold in it because an airborne seed or whatever, or an animal spreading it could certainly, you know, get seeds in it, but it shouldn't be, I don't think, from most of the construction sources, but I'll kick it over to Sanjit.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've addressed this, Nate addressed it really well. As we import material, and talked about it, there's different types of material that we will need. We need low permeability material to make sure there's less infiltration. We need topsoil so that the vegetation can take. This pit has been mined for decades. The first thing, the first layer that you take out is the topsoil. That topsoil does not exist at the site today, so we will need that. In terms of seeds, we'll be working with the Water Board to develop that site-specific criteria, and that will be a part of our closure plan. And they, again, there is very, there's specific screens associated. We've also gone through a full SEQA review and have the agencies, have permits from the different agencies, and these things are very, we have requirements for native vegetation to take to a certain percentage. So all these will be followed, they will be maintained and monitored. We will have independent biologists, as well as the agencies, coming on-site to routinely monitor these, and just if there is more and more percentage of invasives, those will be handled appropriately and replaced by riparian vegetation, so.
And Robert, you had some comments?
Just to add briefly to what Sanjit said, for the restoration plan, there's a long-term monitoring plan, and there's success criteria that needs to be met in order for that plan to be considered successful. And so that's going to proceed for several years after the actual grading work is done. And then similarly, for the reclamation plan, for any reclamation plan, there's success criteria that specifies the native species that need to be planted and how many survive. And also, there is limits to the number of non-native invasives that can be present in a specified area. So in order for the quarry to be fully reclaimed and for their reclamation bond to be released once reclamation has been completed, the achievement of that success criteria is going to need to be demonstrated, except to need to be demonstrated, accepted first by the county and then ultimately by the state. And only if that criteria has been met will we determine that the quarry has been fully reclaimed and then the bond can be released and it's no longer a quarry at that point under state law.
You mentioned the bond. This question is about financing. How is this reclamation project funded? Are related government activities funded by Heidelberg Materials? Could ask Heidelberg.
Yeah, I mean, things like the EIR, you know, of course, we pay the county's consultant ESA to do that work. So, you know, think activity, of course, there's permit fees for many of these things. So, you know, there's various sources, I guess, but yeah, I mean, Heidelberg funds the work that we need to do and pays the appropriate permit fees, et cetera, gets the bonds in place we need. But, you know, it's typical reclamation work that we do, you know, all over North America, so.
And then there's a question about cost of bringing 1 million cubic yards of fill from sea level to 1,700 feet. Do you have a sense of how much that would, that costs or would cost?
Guess it depends where it's coming from. I mean, you know, the distance, I would think, would factor into the transportation. I don't completely understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is the carbon, so they're talking about the carbon emissions costs. That's a, are you asking what the carbon emissions would be from the transport of?
There are, based on the mileage, there are calculators that you can apply to, you know, based on internal combustion engines, you can look at various emission calculators. Yeah, you can calculate, I mean, there are models that you can calculate.
Well, I think, and that's, that's what's going to be looked at. There will be, I believe there will be an analysis of that. And as we mentioned, you know, there's a question about what about the rail line versus trucks? So all of that will be looked at during this process and I would expect that we will look at what the, you know, best way to do, to do, to execute the plan will be. Did you have some more thoughts, Robert?
Yes, greenhouse gas emissions is one area that the EIR is required to analyze. And there are mitigation strategies that can be employed to some degree offset those emissions. Ultimately, whether it can be mitigated to a less insignificant level remains to be seen. And should it not, then it's going to be up to the decision maker to decide whether that's acceptable. And certainly also in any EIR, there's a requirement that alternatives be developed that are required to minimize or reduce an impact such as greenhouse gas emissions. And we will be including devising alternatives based on the impacts that we identify as being significant. And I think it's likely that some kind of reduced import alternative will be included in the EIR, although we haven't gotten to the point to say that for certain. But again, it seems likely just based on the common sense standpoint of the volume of the level of trucks that would be required to import that level of fill.
There's a question here about, about that. Is it, are removing the selenium leaching rocks from the quarry to somewhere else, is it worth the cost of 20 years of truck pollution? So again, all of this will be analyzed in the EIR. And with the EIR, if you are not familiar with it, the document, it will go through air, water, all of these different elements, and then it will suggest mitigation measures. And then it'll say what's mitigatable, you know, how to mitigate it. And then there's sometimes it'll say not mitigatable. And then at the very end, if there's too much that's not mitigatable, there is a process where the governing body has to basically vote to decide whether to approve a project and approve it under what we call overriding considerations. So are the benefits and do the benefits outweigh the unmitigatable aspects or not? And so this is, will be the entire process that this EIR entails. It is challenged. I've done this, I've had to approve EIRs on many, many projects and this is where we really will be looking to you all for your input and comments as we go through this process. But it is the intent that we will look at all of these different aspects. Let's see, we have a few more questions here. This one goes to the fill. What is the definition of clean fill that will be used? Are there plans to contain, purify dangerous chemicals found around the quarry like mercury, selenium, NOx? And other than capping the quarry with non-permeable fill? I don't know who, is it Heidelberg? Have you start off?
So again, clear definition of clean fill, this is something that is something we'll be working with the water board to define what it is. It's going to be site-specific and I think we've alluded to it already, but there will be a very specific screening criteria for this material that will be brought on site. It'll have to be sampled, as Greg rightly alluded to before. If it passes those requirements that are approved by the water board as we work with them on the closure plan, that will be what will define what the clean fill is going to look like. It's going to be every single load. It has to be wherever, wherever we're getting it from, all of that has to be reviewed, yes.
Another question.
If I could just add on, maybe two different definitions to a clean fill. One is more of an intuitive definition that we have where you don't want trash, stuff from a landfill, concrete debris, like none of that stuff is going to go in there, we wouldn't consider that clean fill. And then a more technical, on the more technical side, we have environmental screening levels, so specific concentrations of contaminants and elements that we would set caps on that you would have to put fill that's below thresholds that we set and that would be considered clean fill. And in terms of sampling criteria, there are established sampling parameters for fill that depend on the volume of material that you're sampling. So you would want X amount of samples per, you know, 100 cubic yards or 1,000 cubic yards of fill. And then that would be how you determine whether a certain size stockpile is clean or not.
Thank you. Another question about fill. With competition for fill from Baylands Restoration and Sea Level Rise Protection, how are you sure there will be enough fill? What is the contingency plan if there's not enough off-site fill available?
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked about this. It's going to, you know, there's going to be variation each year, obviously depending on, you know, what that construction activity looks like. But, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking to others that are doing similar work like Dunbarton that we keep referring to because it's very similar work and that, you know, outlet is nearly full now. So there will be a need for another place like Dunbarton that's in the vicinity. So, you know, to your point about truck traffic and emissions, if there's not an outlet for fill locally, that's going to get transported even further. So the overall emissions could be actually even further if the material has to be sent, you know, outside of the local area. So, you know, there is a need and, you know, the construction activity will be there. Obviously, there's variations and can be, you know, large swings like what we went through with the COVID years and things like that, but also, you know, very large projects that hit as well. So, you know, it'll be there, it's just going to be variable. It's not going to be the same every year, certainly. And we can't take all the material for all the reasons we talked about with the acceptance criteria. So there's a lot of variables, you know, we can't sit here today and tell you exactly how many tons or yards are going to come in each year, but, you know, we know there's a need because there are similar projects being completed right now in the area. And we keep, you know, pointing to a Dunbarton, but it's just a great example of, you know, where material's currently going. And you realize that that facility's almost completely full, so definitely a need.
And I'll add, wearing my transportation hat, we have some big projects like the BART tunneling that will create some fill, so there might be opportunity there. Final few questions, we talked about this, what consideration, oop, sorry, what consideration has been given or will be given to eventual use of the quarry land after completion of reclamation? Will you consider land for housing considering it sits near a rail right of way that BTNA may one day use for transit? Talked a little bit about that already.
Yeah, just again, we, you know, we want to hear from you. There will be listening sessions. We certainly want to hear what's important to the community and that will all be taken into consideration. Right now, currently, our focus is on, you know, the projects we talked about, right? The stuff that has to happen upfront anyway, the creek restoration, the demolition and the rec plan amendment, so, or implementation when we get there. So there's a lot of work that we're going to focus on and definitely, you know, we want to make that outreach and listening part of this process. It will be a long process, but, you know, we certainly want to hear from folks and there'll be a lot of opportunities, so please, you know, take advantage of those.
And finally, where can we find the hours of operation for the quarry and truck traffic hours, rules such as all loads must be covered? Sarah?
About that one too, a little bit. You know, as far as the current operations that are out there, you know, they start at 4:00 and so generally the first trucks out should be 4:30 for this operation. You know, so that's, that's the current schedule and operate into, I think, right about, you know, noon-ish timeframe. So that's the current operation for the aggregates. Which I think we talked about that.
Can we, yes, so we're going to end this segment, there's all the questions that I, and I asked you to put your questions on cards, so we're going to, so I'm going to ask you to take it offline. I would like to formally end this meeting. I think some of us will stay afterwards to answer any further questions. So again, I just want to end, formally end this evening's meeting. Thank you all very much for coming out this evening. Again, you'll find the video posted on the City of Cupertino's YouTube channel soon and my office will share the link with you in our upcoming newsletter. Please remember, you'll also get to make comments during the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report, when it's posted. Again, please scan the newsletter QR code on your way out at the check-in tables so you can be subscribed to receive updates from my office. So we will continue to update you. This is a long process, but we will continue to keep you posted. And then before we close, I just want to thank all of our panelists, our partner agencies, and most importantly, all of you community members for showing this up this evening. And we will continue to work with you with the best solutions on this new era at Permanente. So again, thank you very much. A big round of applause for our panelists. And again, thank you all for coming this evening. Good night.